There you go.
Okay, let's call to order the special meeting of the city council. I'll just declare all present except Vicki. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion second to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. No one from the public wishing to address the council? Get into our capital improvements plan work session, Brian.
You've got the big spreadsheet, which shows all of the projects that staff has come up with, it's in no particular order. So a couple things, if council members have something that isn't on the list, certainly let us know so we can, we can take a look at it. Parks and golf course aren't on here yet. They're down on the bottom, but they're not broken on, they're not broken out yet, so I don't think we'll get to them tonight.
I don't think we'll get to that happen.
No, so what, what we would like to do is present or explain all of the listed projects for you. We've got an explanation sheet or an info sheet on it. Kind of what's, what it is, what the name of it is. Kind of a history, what we're looking at for schedules, and then funding sources. What we'd like to do is get through all of them. And this will take a while, two or three meetings anyway, to explain each of the projects, answer your questions and any particular questions you have on a certain project. And then, you know, the council, the councils has the primary role in this process by prioritizing those projects. So we may, we may take a step back and let the council work and determine which projects are the highest priorities. Once you've determined those, Christine and I get to sit down and figure out A, how they're going to be funded, and B, when they can be funded.
Are we gonna do filters?
Yes, we, we should. You know, the first place, one of the first places we should go is probably the water treatment plant. So that everybody has an idea of, of when we're talking about filters and pumps. That, so we can do that relatively soon. We should always show them the Big Sioux lift station. Everybody needs to go down into the bottom of it. And then, any other facilities you want to take a look at?
Oh, I think we should take them over to the Big Sioux rec and look at that. I looked at that.
Yeah, we can, we can...
We did get some good pictures of that today too, so we tried to incorporate pictures of the infrastructure too. And then, we handed out binders with all of them in there, we'll add to that obviously at each one. Tonight, we just got a handful of these done, so they're not all of them there. Kind of working till the last minute, so we'll add to the binders easier time, so just bring those with you to the CIP meetings.
Or leave them here?
Or leave them here, yep.
You know, what we're trying to do now is prioritize for the next five years, that's the window we're, we're primarily looking at. But also prioritize those projects beyond that five-year window. So that we can start planning for those in that five to 10. I don't, I don't think it, it's really worth going out further than 10 with our thoughts. Five is about as far as we need to go, but anyway, now I'm going to turn this over to Tammy and Christina. Tammy can, can kind of go through the project, explain what is involved with the project. And then if you want, Christina can, can go through the, the magic of where the money comes from, we think.
And remember, as we're working through this, this is a working document. It's something that we have to review every single year. This year will be kind of a long process, just because we don't have one yet. So after it's kind of set up, then every year it's a review and we can move things around as needed. But it's not something that's just set in stone. Another thing to point out is there's no maintenance items in here. So we do like curb repairs every year, asphalt patchwork, slurry seal, those type of projects are not in here. I think eventually we'll try to get those in here, so at least it's documented and everyone is aware of the plan and how we kind of move through the town, that sort of thing, but for this year, we're going to stick with the big capital improvement projects. So the big sheet, the very first sheet, if you look way at the bottom, if you look at that 20-year CIP total, which I don't know that any of these projects should wait 20 years, but it's at just under $150 million. So as we go through here, there's going to be some pretty tough choices to be made. And priority is really going to be important. When I first started, not knowing much about the infrastructure in Brandon, everybody kept coming into my office and saying, hey, we need to do this. Hey, we need to do that. Hey, this needs to be updated. And so what I did was I put all of these little projects on a sticky note and put them on my wall and tried to do the five-year, 10-year, 20-year thing. And it became pretty impossible. So that's where a lot of these projects kind of came from, is just over the last couple of years of people just throwing out different items that we need to do. The first couple, I think everybody's pretty aware of, and then as we go down the list, everyone's probably not so aware of. So if we wanted to just start with the core area reconstruction first. The core area, we did the RFP in 2019. And HDR is our consultant engineer on it. We fast-tracked that first design really fast and got this project moving. We had a near-perfect construction year. They started really early and they're still going, but I think we're definitely pushing our luck with some of it. We had five concrete crews out there today. And they're still not thinking that they're going to get done with concrete work until after the first of October. So they're hoping for the first week in October and then they can start paving. So then they still gotta do all the topsoil and they have to seed and all of that, so this was a big project and I don't think that we should plan for these size of projects in one year. We very much have to, if we're going to do a project this large, we need to plan for it being two years. With that, we also need a whole year of design. Because there's just a lot of homeowners and everybody wants to know about their trees and their driveway and their sidewalk and all the grading that goes into it. So we pretty much do almost meet with every single homeowner, at least once. One thing we changed with this too is our construction easements. We've always had construction easements before, I don't know that every single person really signed those and before they were notarized. This year we made it as more of an agreement, so it's easier for them and probably not as scary. They can just sign those and send them in. So those are some of the changes that we made. And again, we planned for this to be five sections. So after that project sheet, there's kind of a phasing diagram there. Phase two is pretty big. Next year, we're planning on doing the design of that. We're kind of working with HDR now to start working on putting those Bs together. They have about 30% plans done right now that they did in preliminary design. And so we have a good base to start. We talked a lot about storm sewer and what we're going to do with some of those drainage issues. So I think we have a good start on it, but it's still going to take quite a bit of time and effort. And there's a pretty big drainage area that we don't have drainage easements or the land. And so we need to start talking about if we need to own the land or if we can get by with just the drainage easement and what's the responsibility either way. How much do we want to maintain after this project's done? That sort of thing. So there's a lot of decisions to be made there with that project yet.
So how, how can we speed that up? Is there, are there two phases that can be put together? I, I am just not comfortable with remaining 10 years to this project. But even if we could get it to eight, I, I don't know what the magic number is, but that's in my mind is just one. How can we speed it up? You said next time, give all the drainage, all of those issues. Do you have so many issues in three, four, or five?
No, and especially in four, we don't. But we've, I don't know if we can break those up in different projects so that we have two different contractors. But at the same time, then we have to get two contractors to work together, so I don't know. We have to worry a lot about weather and that sort of thing. And when we start talking about it, like this year down Main Avenue, we had seven excavators out there. I would not expect that out of hardly any of the South Dakota firms to be able to do that. But they brought in a lot of crews to get this project done. And so it is doable. We did it this year, but I, I really think that most years, this is going to take two years. And one thing to think about that too is if we do all of this in 10 years, all of our maintenance for this roads have to be done in 10 years. And then, when we have to replace this, we're almost stuck doing it all at one time again. There is an advantage to spacing it out just a little bit, so that in the future, we don't have the same problem of all these streets going bad at the same time.
But none of us are going to be here by then, so I'm not really too worried about that.
I hope I'm here.
I'm just trying to think of our residents that we've brought.
Great.
I don't know. What's, what issues do you have in phase three, four, or five?
Well, in like phase five, those streets are not in terrible shape. In 10 years, yes, they're probably going to need something. But they're not falling apart like third or fourth. So maybe it's one of those, we focus really hard on it until we get those really bad streets fixed. And then we can kind of back off and then do a street at a time. But as we go through these projects, I think you're going to find that we're going to have to be a little bit flexible. Because we have a lot of projects that need to get done.
Now, so is HDR the consultant on the whole thing?
The whole thing, yep.
How have they been to work with?
Um, I would say we pushed them a little too hard on that first phase. There were quite a few things that did not get into the plan set that really needed to, that we're fixing out in the field, which takes a lot more time, obviously. And there's been a lot more negotiations with contractors because of it, because now we're kind of at their mercy of pricing and timing and all of that. I think they definitely did better on the construction side than what they did on the design side. So we definitely sat down and did kind of a lessons learned meeting. And hopefully we get some of those expectations fixed. And given them some more time to do the design, there'll be more time for city staff to review the plans as well, to make sure that they're up to par.
So when you say that it takes a year to design this, that to me is I, I can understand dealing with the homeowners and the easements and that kind of stuff. But when I think of design, I think of the layout and the, what the engineers are doing. And I can't possibly think that it can take a year. And so in my world, I, I just, I, I guess I'm missing something. I just think like, wait, don't they just put a couple of people on and just work on it?
Um, yeah. And they could...
I know, but we should be, I mean, we should be a priority with a couple other people.
But even say they do it in, you know, eight months, we only have that small bidding window. Like we can't bid, we don't want to bid in April and we don't want to bid in June. So that's kind of why it takes a year. Is there's no way we were going to get it done in time to bid this year. And so that way it kind of gets pushed a whole another year.
Going into this, didn't they know our timetable and didn't they know that we wanted it done?
And...
Right, so I guess back to Bart's point, how they're doing for us if they're not...
Honestly, I think they're the only firm around that could handle a project this size.
For what we pay them?
If, if we cut down the size of the
Of the phase?
Of the different phases.
Right.
If we have design here at the same time that they're doing construction on first, you know, the first section, would that, I mean, would that be a possibility so that we've got something happening every year?
Yes.
Rather than taking a year off every year?
So if we would do design 2021, do construction 2022, in 2022, we could be working on the design for phase three.
For 2023.
Right, so then we would have construction every year.
And I, and I think if we have construction every year, I think we're making progress and, and people can see it. If, if these phases, and, and I got to think about the the rain events that we had last year, if we had had those this year, where would we be?
Not even close to being done.
Over the winter because we took out a, a huge chunk here. And I can kind of understand, understand looking at the scope of what we have here. In fact, you can't do, you can't do it all at the same time, you could get a matchup, a, an elevation.
Right.
Engineering stuff.
Yeah, if you want to construct every year, the phases are going to be pretty much cut, have to be cut in half. It's going to have to be two A, two B. If you want to do construction every year.
I, I would...
Why, why do you say that?
Because if they don't get the last portion of phase two done, you cannot start phase three until phase two's done.
I, I was wondering if you were saying about money issues?
Well, that, that will have to figure out, at a point in time, there'll be a point in time where you need, probably need to stop, but that depends on where you prioritize, prioritize everything too. But no, it's more making sure the phase gets done to do the construction for the next phase next year.
If you remember, phase one was, was divvied up into three separate sections, A, B, and C. And we weren't necessarily sure that we were going to get C done this year. It's all weather dependent. Thankfully, it would appear that we're going to get it done.
Here. There's not asphalt yet.
Not yet, but it's going to happen.
Yes.
So...
No negative play.
I know.
So Christine's correct, if, if we would break it down into A, B, and C again on all of these projects and then bid out phase three, and then we didn't get phase two C done, it makes things extremely complicated to move on to phase three.
It all comes downstream and starts blocking up and...
Yep.
So we change the last four phases to be five phases? And just take like 25% off of each one of them to make it not, their expectations not so great? But still look forward, and we had one year, I don't know, handful of years?
And maybe as we go through this, you want to throw a dollar amount at it, like we want to spend $4 million every year or something. Maybe that's an easier way to go about it. Because I feel like we could change this phasing a million times.
Would it affect the bidding if we...
Not really.
I would think the engineers and contractors, no offense to them, I don't think they'd like the whole dollar amount every year. Because they're...
No, we wouldn't. We wouldn't give them a dollar.
Physical barriers, let's say, you'd say we could do something like that.
Approximately $4 million, give or take. You know, because there's going to be, you'll have to go down, let's say, Home Street before you can do something, and then that makes phase two a little bit bigger, or phase two B a little bit bigger. So you can, you can kind of throw a number at it, but that number's very flexible.
I like that concept of trying to design while we're doing it, just tighten it up.
To, from the, for me, from the outside looking in, I I think that was always the perception of, of what was told to the residents was, we're going to have construction every year. And in five years, we're going to have this thing done. To me, it only, it's, oh, okay, we're going to design it in 2021, we've designed work in 2021, it's going to be work for 2022. And they're on, they're on. I can't believe that any engineering firm would take a, a year to design that, any particular one. I, I get it that, you know, if they start design work now, you'd, it'd be pretty tough to bid in the early spring, February type thing. But that's not what we'd be asking them to do. We'd be asking them to do the design work from March until
November time.
Whatever, yeah.
Right, right. And we just need to get onto that schedule. I mean, this year, we just didn't have time and I didn't have time, because we had two very large projects bleed over into this year because of the weather last year. That shouldn't have been out there, and they took a lot of coordination because that one project butted up against this new project. And it was constant back and forth with contractors. It's hey, can you do this so that they have access, so that this contractor can do something, and then it was going back and forth.
I get that. But no offense to anybody here, but I'm just going to throw this question out there. Why weren't they doing the design work already?
Because I told them no. Because we had to get preliminary engineering done, that was behind. We had to get the design done on the first phase, which was behind.
But after that all done though, I'm, I'm talking about the last. Since the project, what, what, since the project for, for phase one was born, besides construction management, what has HDR done?
I mean, if we want to point fingers and blame somebody for it not being designed right now, I guess that's my fault. Because I wasn't going to bring...
Don't, don't get me, you know, don't, don't take...
A lot of that is, is we wanted to make sure one C was going to get constructed. Because if one C was not going to get constructed this year, we, there's no way that we could have done construction on phase two next year. So that was part of it, and we did not know that until July, I think, is when they tore up C. So that was part of it, that, that's why it'd be easier if we would get these smaller, so we know that they're going to get done. So that's part of it as well.
I'm kind of playing devil's advocate here, but like, isn't phase one the largest of the projects, of the phases?
No, they're all the same linear feet.
They are?
Yep.
Yep. And that whole year to design, design from an engineering standpoint, isn't going to take the whole year. Sitting down with individual property owners is going to take a good chunk of that time. Because they want to see what's going to be in my yard. Is my tree going to be gone? Where's the sidewalk going to go? So you really can't sit down with those property owners until you've got the plan done. I mean, doesn't have to be fully done, but a, a good chunk of it has to be done. And the other side of that is I think last year on phase one, we had two weeks for staff to review.
I really didn't even get a chance to review.
So it'd be nice to have a full month of staff to go through sheet by sheet and page by page and catch those things that the engineers might not be aware of, but that we might be. You know, there's a couple of things that came up, one was a fire hydrant. They got moved. Another one over in that same neck of the woods was a gentleman had a, a drainage weighing between his house and the house next to him. Well, if we'd known that, we could have designed something in the design to do that, to take that drainage out. But we caught it after the project was bid. And we put in a little area drain or something. So there's just little items like that that take time.
Well, I think we had some learnings from this one, because Tammy is new working with us. I, I think, I shouldn't speak for council, I will speak for myself. I was blindsided that we were having problems and it was not being designed for next year. And so I just think that we need better coordination, and I think it's a council decision as to if those things get done or not. And we need to be aware of it. Now, maybe I was told and missed, like I said, my memory's crappy. But I felt like we did not have control of the situation and we should...
Now, we, we've talked about that among staff, that we need to do a better job of keeping the council up to date on where we're at with, with some of these projects as we, as we move along.
The optimism tells me, tells me that as we go forward with the, talking with the homeowners and the next phases, and we had a great unknown here, and uncertainty on a lot of parts, you know, what's this going to do, how's this going to look? Now we've got this, I, I think it looks great. I think it's going to be a, an easier sell.
Just, just like Sylvan Circle, that was five phases? Six phases, the first phase was pretty tough. The second phase, the second phase was a little bit easier, we didn't have quite as many questions or, or comments. The fifth, the last phase,
There's nothing.
There was, there was very little.
So the second phase will get better, but it's a little better. But she had a conversation with somebody on fourth or sixth. And was, came in kind of mad and wanted her to go look at her, his property, and Tammy asked, well, did you, did you look at what's happening here? Nope, I don't care, that's not my property. So you're going to have those two.
It does get better. But I, I've talked to two, two families that live in the, what would be phase well, two and phase four, I guess. And they were dead set against it, the project, in the beginning. But both admitted that, oh, you know, those streets do look pretty good. You know, it's definitely a lot safer. I, I actually had somebody who used to sit up at that table who was opposed to the project say, yeah.
And you're going to get that.
Yep.
It's just, it's reality. The thing I keep going back to folks though is, having been in this business is that I worry so much about the people that you are directly paying, those people sitting right up there, and the time that they have to dedicate to the project. I don't care how many projects you have, if you don't have those people involved in that project, you're going to end up with problems. Outside consultants, outside engineers don't care what you think. They just, they leave at five o'clock and they don't care. We need to be able to manage these projects internally, that's what I always worry about, we just don't have enough manpower.
And it's that drainage way. That seems like one of the simple things that they, they should have caught long before you guys haven't catched.
Uh, not really, because it was back behind houses and we don't have them survey back that far. So that was kind of the reasoning. You know, if we had a chance to walk through it...
And Tammy, you can't sit there and say that you would catch all that stuff either.
Absolutely not.
You at least got a chance.
If we, if we sit down a little more with the property owners? Well, they're going to bring those things up. Yes. You know, I think when they did the survey, they did a light, or some...
They did laser scan.
Laser scan, it was on two-foot contours?
Oh, no, there's, it's very detailed.
But they missed it because...
They don't go back far enough.
It was back between houses.
The other thing that I want to just add to the conversation a little bit on these engineers. And God knows, I've worked with enough engineers in my life and we'll just leave it at that. We'll just leave it at that.
Consulting engineers.
Yeah, consultants.
And I never thought in my life that I would say that, but it's not just a design of the, of the project. You have to remember that the, the biggest part that I've encountered when I'm dealing with engineers is the design of the bid specifications. You have, guys, you have books that are this, right here, to this tall, that have this detailed stuff in there, you know, that the angle iron to put in the
Needs to be sized.
The the, what am I trying to say, the fire extinguisher, the...
Oh, the catch, yeah.
The thing that you had problems with and that guy down there.
Yeah.
What the hell is that thing? Fire hydrant, thank you, Jesus, Lonberg. But, I mean, you just had, you probably have three pages of detail on that. And, you know, every school that I build, you have these plan documents that, and I, I mean this sincerely, guys. I can't lift, I have to have somebody come in and help me lift the plan documents, those big things. I mean, this is God honest truth, they're so heavy that, and, and, you know, they're part of it, they're cumbersome, but uh, so it's not just the design that we, we think of as, I'll say, laid people. Sure, I, I agree that I think that a heck, I know how to fix Four Street right now, I mean, just tear it all up and put a new Four Street in, and, but there is a and you're, you're dealing with that window, as you guys have talked about before, that window is, is not a year. It's probably a window of five to six months that you have to get all that stuff done.
Construction.
To get it out in an appropriate timeframe to bid. So it's not a 12-month time period that you have to design and get all that done, it's probably more of a five, six-month time for, correct?
Right.
And I will, I will say, because phase one was new before, because it was contentious with sidewalks and street width and all of that, so Tammy was busy. Constantly with residents. I don't, I mean, she had emails and phone calls and text messages on the whole entire project, so that will get easier. But I'm just saying, I mean, she was busy this summer with it.
But I'm, I'm also, we got to do, as you said, Brian, we got to do better job with council, we got to do a better job of managing those people too, because people... Because people, uh, it, it gets down to the point where they think they own, I mean, and you gotta deal with them, I get it, but you gotta learn how to manage them better too. Uh, and I, it, it's very difficult. And it's not gonna, we're gonna have some of that, like you talked, Jack, that it's a lot better cause they see the end result and stuff. But we're still gonna have a lot of negative nellies in phase five. I mean, I can give you a handful of emails from phase five that I have in my file right now that not one of them is in favor of. Not, I'm invited to zero of those Christmas parties. So-
Which is probably a good thing.
You're gonna have issues still.
Yeah.
You do, they just get, they decrease every year.
I don't wanna profess that it's gonna be yippy skippy when we get to phase four and five, you're gonna have issues.
Well, I think when phase five looks down the street, see what's going on in phase three or phase four. I, I, I do what they-
It-
They're gonna be, they're gonna be-
It's a good selling point, but like I said, of the handful of emails that I got right now in my file, that they don't care what it looks like.
Well, it looks beautiful, so hats off to all of you guys for organizing, all of you, it looks great.
So if you back, go back to the first page of the project overview, at the bottom is the sources of funding. The total project cost for the rest, which is phase two through five, is about thirty-four million. Um, about sixty-one percent of that comes out of the general fund, which will be sales tax revenue bonds. Fifteen percent comes out of sanitary sewer, about eight percent will come out of our stormwater utility fee that we hope to, um, get going next year. About fifteen percent is water and about one percent is the street, additional streetlights or the changing of the streetlights that we do in that project. So that's what we're looking at for the-
This, this says thirty-four, up at the top of the big sheet, it says forty-five.
That's because that includes phase one as well.
The big sheet does.
The only thing we have left to-
Oh, two, okay, I gotta read the whole one.
The only thing we have left to fund is phase two through five.
So does that thirty-four million change at all if this does end up stretching out over ten years?
Yes.
You know, there's definitely a cost of inflation.
Some.
But we did use all the, these cost estimates are taken from the bids of this year. Which we all expect those to kinda go down this next year because everyone is getting all their projects done now. So they're not as busy as they were last year. I don't know if that'll be true or not, you never know.
And this also includes inflation and contingency and all of that in it, so it's, I mean, it's fairly healthy.
What, what do you, what does that come out to like a mile or a block or?
Ooh.
Uh, it's about eight hundred and fifty dollars a linear foot.
So it's all right?
Yeah.
It's expensive.
So we, we ran some, just some numbers yesterday, Tammy had a idea or a comment as to how much the city is investing in everyone's properties, you know, since we're not special assessing. You know, on a fifty foot lot times four hundred and twenty-five dollars a linear foot, that's how much we are investing in the individual properties. And then we figured out how many, how much sales tax dollars it would take to pay off that investment, that public investment.
Don't even go there, Brian.
You don't wanna know the numbers.
It's a little over a million dollars.
It doesn't matter.
Nope.
No.
So anyway-
Next topic.
Any questions on the core process?
On that fourth phase, we'll just have to break down the phasing a little bit so we know, add, either adding a phase, either one or whatever we need to do, but-
Yeah.
We'll kinda add to phase six or on there. To get to a size that we know we can get done in one year, basically.
Are we gonna start that with phase two?
That we weren't planning on, but we could.
I would recommend it.
I think once we get through the CIP and we'll see how much money we have and that'll be an easier decision to make.
Man, I'm just thinking about, I think we've got great weather this year and we could have rain done next year.
Well, take last year and this year and average two together. You know, last year was extremely wet, this year is extremely dry. You're gonna end up somewhere in the middle.
Anyone can get seed on?
Yeah, usually, usually construction doesn't start till May, we started in April, so we picked up thirty days. And then, like I said, once you get, once you get past the first part of October, I start getting nervous with blacktopping. Cause the asphalt plant will eventually shut down at some point. I've seen it, I've seen paving taking place in, or asphalt in, into, or first part of December on some years and I've seen it shut down, you know, the first half of October. Yeah.
Save it up.
Yep.
Can I say, can I say one thing about the phasing of these? When it comes to phasing like four, three, four, it's gonna have, it's gonna have to be dictated until utilities there. Cause there's a lot of drainage and a lot of utilities. Like your sewer is running from east to west down Cedar Street. So if we change into that phasing, they end up only doing two-thirds of the street, of one street and then having to do half of another street. So you get, you're not gonna have a straight line if this is determined to that. Your phasing is gonna change and then they end up having to go back to that same street and tear some of that up the next year. So utilities are gonna dictate some of that. So I guess that's what I've, I've mentioned before and I'm still kinda surprised that we're to have the same linear feet developed by phases. Because there's definitely certain places where there's more difficult, different structure to deal with. And-
We tried to make them as close as possible.
Well, and I get that for, you know, for concrete painting work, but, um, for some of the other smaller details that are really actually very large. It seems to me like contractors and even engineering firm prefer to see some of these phased, not necessarily on a square foot basis or linear foot basis, but on infrastructure and, and perfect timing needs, you know, like you were saying about, about Cedar. You know, may, maybe it makes more sense to do all of that in one phase. Yeah, I mean, just throwing out an idea to me, but- I don't know, but I don't do that because then you're still gonna go back into those areas to do your utilities off of them on the street. So you're gonna tear up Ford and Cedar, Bill and Cedar. You have to go back and then have to tear it all up again from Cedar up, I guess, if I get to- No, I, I, I can get that now.
Okay, drainage, drainage and sewer drives everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, H and W can figure out where phasing needs to stop, they, that's what they did on this one, so we can reach out to them.
At the risk of-
That Sylvan Circle project was part, that was part of the problem with that whole time because it started in the middle of Sylvan Circle. And we had to jump around so much and back to get four hours.
Hey, don't start up in the middle.
You gotta start at the bottom and work your way up, and then the way this is phasing, you're starting at the bottom and work your way up.
I had a, I had a resident challenger ask me about this project and that you guys started the lot.
Okay, Rushmore, are we ready to move on to Rushmore?
One more point, with the risk of making Dave mad by not being optimistic and being pessimistic. People, we all have to sometimes take a step back too and think that the project that H and W Construction is doing right now in front of the lumberyard, that was supposed to be completed in October of last year. One year from today, or one year ago today, that was supposed to be done. They've been down there this entire summer.
Is that their fault or the weather or what?
It's a little bit of both, but it's their fault.
I would question if I ever allowed them to work on another, we've, city project of ours again.
We've discussed that.
I guess avoid it if there's a little bidder.
Well, you've, it's the lowest response is-
Smart.
Yes, done with it.
So if you can document, uh, you know, we've got one company that is in our non-bidder list. Winter Brothers, cause that was phase one of Sylvan and they did such a crappy job. So there's ways to disqualify bidders, you just have to make sure that all of your documentation is there. I think this might-
That was supposed to be a one-year project.
So was Holly, and so we had two big projects finishing up this year along with our other ones.
That's the negative nelly part of the thing, that we gotta kinda put it in perspective, that that was supposed to be done one year ago last year and, and here we are, we're still, I mean, that project isn't seventy-five percent done yet.
Oh, yeah, it's going to be paved, hopefully, starting on Saturday and be open next week. But yes, they still have to do topsoil and seeding and trees and they have to do the forest maintenance of the park, so they do have some work yet.
So what, uh, what changes, did you have a lot of change orders there or?
There's a lot of weather.
Yeah, it was really wet last year.
A, they started late.
That sort of affects that one.
A, they started late.
They started.
They started later than we should've, um, cause they were backed up from the year before. Two, the flood hit, uh, weather, high groundwater, um, they were pumping water, de-watering where we didn't anticipate them de-watering that much based upon soil bores that we done the year before. So-
What was our excuse for this year?
Yeah.
H and W doesn't make excuses, they just don't care.
They're just slow.
They're slow.
Piece of junk.
Oh. They didn't have some crews in here in your site works then, so.
Right, it makes a big difference on what contractor you get, so.
I mentioned that in the meeting this morning.
And once again, the engineer is very key. I don't know if it was coincidence, but John Fisher's tail end is a lot less, uh, bulkier than right before Aspen got paved. I mean, I went off on him, I went completely berserk on John about that project and good thing is, three days later it got paved, but, uh, it depends a lot on the engineer. Those guys, you know, look, they're all together, they-
Believe it, I've done with the engineers.
They sleep in the same bed, all of them.
I don't know about that, but-
And, uh, so that's so- That's so key that, uh, those guys can be your friend or they can be your foe. Uh, it, it's so hard.
All right, Rushmore? Yeah. History, Tammy?
Uh, history and Rushmore. Rushmore is really a continuation off of Sylvan Circle, Brandon Park Edition, Brandon-
Which phase are we on overall in the, we had about Sylvan Circle phase?
Nine.
Nine.
Is that counting Brandon Park Edition that we did last year?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I think that's about eight.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we pushed, or they moved things around to not do this one right away because of the drainage issues.
Correct.
So right now, a lot of the stormwater, it discharges in two different locations into the Split Rock Creek. Um, it is definitely causing some severe erosion and some of our inlets out there are collapsing. So there's some pretty big drainage issues and so in order to change that, we're proposing that we send all of that stormwater down to the south. Um, Jason Gussow, he lives way on the south end and he has a really large parcel at the bottom there, kind of along Aspen. And-
Where's that Aspen?
If it highlighted in the blue.
The big blue square?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, just saw the little sheds that he has out there, outbuildings or whatever.
So we would get rid of those two outlet structures that go to Split Rock Creek and then it would go down into a pond. And I'm meeting with Jason on Saturday morning to kinda go over just to see what that land's really worth to him. It is mostly in the flood plain and you can't, really can't build on that site. So it's probably not worth much, but to him, I think it's worth enough because that's where he walks his dog and drives his four wheeler around and that sort of thing. So I think he's been pretty open to selling it to the city for drainage here. So we'll see how the-
So he owns that all to Aspen?
He does, it's a huge parcel.
Yeah, when did he buy that? I mean, he had that for what?
Yeah, four, well, geez, six, seven years ago now, when did Gene move out?
All of that.
Has it?
He bought Gene's house, so.
Yeah. Yep.
It's plugged that way, we've seen that.
Yep.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, Jason's a good guy and I, I'd started talking to him a year or two ago about it. So it's not a, it's not a shock to him.
So there's that drainage channel on Oak, Oak Ridge Road, would that still, would it even still go through there?
There's a drainage channel, do you mean out to the river or?
Well, there goes, well, I'm just thinking, we have friends that live on Oak Ridge Road and there's that drainage-
Yep, there's a drainage outlet structure kinda on the north end of Oak Ridge Road that runs between two houses.
Yeah, would that stay?
No, that will go away.
That would be good.
He's gonna push it back towards, I think it's-
Yellowstone.
Yellowstone and that Yellowstone will carry it down to Rushmore.
To the south and to the south.
Yep. That's one of those, that's one of those structures that's, that's collapsing and we can't get to it.
Yeah, that's the biggest problem.
It's down in the middle of the hill.
You thought it was an old place?
Yeah.
We can't get to it and there's no way for us, we cameraed it, but the guy didn't want to even put the camera over there because it was such a straight drop.
Cause I don't think Oak Ridge Road itself is in patch.
Well, we, we patched Oak Ridge Road three years ago, four years ago, I can't remember now. So we did a, a little bit of an oval overlay on the north end, cause it was, it was really bad. The problem with Yellowstone and South Oak Ridge primarily, it's blue clay. So it's, it's not good.
Does this a little bit?
Yes.
And water blocking was?
Yep. So, and there's, I don't think there's any base under it. So that's part of the problem. You know, what we're doing now is we're excavating now, we're putting fabric down, we're putting a base under everything, there's nothing there now, it's just crap. For the correct engineering term.
Select, build.
Yes. And the other reason that we need to get into this area is the water mains. If I remember right, right in the water study, a lot of the, a lot of the water main pipes in this area are asbestos concrete. Which was popular back in the fifties, very, very brittle. Um, if there is a water main break, it, you, you can, you can end up chasing it. Cause as you cut the, as you cut the pipe, it may shatter another ten feet away.
So based on our Sylvan Circle phases, how do you think this, these neighbors, this neighborhood will accept the construction? Will, will we be putting inside other sidewalks?
There's not, but we will be putting in sidewalks.
So.
I think you said that same here.
Uh-huh.
I don't think they ever go back on that one because you said it and-
And no one's really complaining about it, I've had a few questions and where it's gonna be placed and how far from the curb, that sort of thing, but I haven't heard anybody complain about it yet.
Are we paying for them again? So we did put them on Sylvan Circle, the other thing, though?
No.
Any others? However, they are set up.
Yes.
Regularly you can put them there.
The pad ramps are in.
Yeah, the ramps are on the curves. So the sidewalks could go-
They could, one of, one of the things that we found out, you know, with the cost increase, in the Sylvan Circle area, we, we drew a line at the property line, said that's all the farther we're going. So we would saw cut driveways at the property line. Regardless of, cause we learned in phase one of Sylvan Circle when we were placing whole driveways, surprisingly. So we just drew a line at the property line, we're going no further than that. So we're not shaping anybody's yards, we're not, if there's a joint a foot away, we're still gonna saw cut it at the property line. With the sidewalk project in phase one, if you drive around, you'll notice that we are, we are into people's yards substantially and driveways because we have to get those sidewalks thin with slopes and ADA requirements. So that's one of the big reasons why there's a significant cost increase compared to the Sylvan Circle because we're doing more work in people's yards than we didn't do before. Anyway.
Sylvan Circle area is pretty flat too.
It is.
We can kinda get away from that, but, or in the core area, it's all over the place, so.
Where does this, as we term it, the Rushmore project, where does the plan for next year start and end?
So if you look in that next page, there's a exhibit here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so the blue is what we would propose for next year. And when we went off our, our FPs, our intent was to do this whole area in three years. And now we're trying to back it off and try to do it in four years, just so the projects aren't so big. But the very first phase is still the largest one and that's mostly due to storm sewer, we have to get that fixed.
They have this design over there?
This first phase, yes.
What's the pink?
The pink would be phase three. The yellow, like Yellowstone and a little bit of Cedar Street, that's phase two. And then green would be phase four.
So what about between pink and green, or like two twelve, these are original spaces are?
So that's all private owned, so we wouldn't do anything there.
About T-Tile Sylvan Circle?
We did that last year.
This little cul-de-sac?
Yep.
Is that behind Dana's office, is that in my bearing straight? Is that behind Dana's office? Is that in my bearing straight?
No, that's Gussow's. That's.
That's Gussow's down there.
That's the.
Oh, you're right. Where's Dana's office here?
In pink.
Pink.
So right there where it goes pink to blue?
No. Yeah. One block in from Split Rock.
Next time I'm going to label her office on there. So, do you see where the high school is along Split Rock? It's.
Here.
No.
So that's my office right there.
Oh.
So are we thinking, um, so once we get blue done, should then yellow's next as a smaller section?
Yep.
But if, I mean, from a, we have to see if the financing would work, but is it possible that we could do that and core of this, on this thing, in the same year?
We can. There's going to be a lot of citizens sending emails and phone calls. I mean.
I, I'm just, I, I don't think it's fine.
Well, that's, that's going to have a big bearing on it.
I would say that first phase is the one that's a must. After that, it's kind of, it needs to get done, but.
After, yeah, after phase one and it, that's six million and the re, a lot of reason that is because of the drainage, we have to get that from the top, north to south. And then I kind of told Jamie, I said, can you really get it around three million? That's a little more ideal. So the rest of the phases are in that three million range.
How bad are these, these roads and the rest of the section?
Rushmore is.
Roads are pretty bad.
Yellow stones.
That's the.
The long one.
Pink and blue.
Yellow stones in tough, tough shape.
How about, how about western, that, that picture of the, of the, of Split Rock? Well, if we did, uh, if we do that, uh, piece of road more of a stakehouse, that would creep down the most of the floor. So from Rushmore or Split Rock to T-town, that road, that part isn't as bad. But you start getting, I guess west or east of Dana's place there, that's where it starts to get rid of that. And further you get to the south, it gets even worse.
That's a good place now.
Well, it's that because it's on a hill, the streets were not filled great and all the drainage is going down that way. So that's where all the drainage channels go and so it creates that street problem. We are putting storm sewers in that way.
Yes.
Everything.
Yep. It's a new standard.
You, you can tell when you drive down the streets, if you drive down Rushmore and head down toward the gold plate, then right along the curves, the road.
You can tell where the water goes.
It's, it's patched, it patched over. It's not good.
So what's all that work down the alley then? Isn't that part of the, to me, it looks like it's behind?
That's where.
That's city property that was built needed. You're talking in the pink area?
Yeah, that's one of them.
That goes on the number three well.
So, and well number three is not connected to the water treatment plant yet. And so with that project, we would put in the infrastructure since we're tearing up the road anyway. So that down the road, when we do connect it to the water treatment plant, we're not tearing up the road and redoing it.
Is that behind my office?
Yes.
So it's not connected to the treatment plant?
No.
Or use it? I mean.
Emergency.
We're in an emergency situation. So. I guess it's treatment, but it's.
Chlorine's added to it, but the iron and manganese aren't removed.
So it's perfectly safe. It's just got a cloudy color to it. So we hear complaints when we use it.
Especially people that wash quite laundry.
Yeah, you start changing.
Get an orange tinge.
Over the water coming out that well and then there is blister of, of iron and pipes. Plus you're adding on treatment, on filter cooperation. So it's.
So the sources of funding on that, um, this one is a little under seventeen million dollars total for all the phases. So again, general fund will be about sixty-one, water and sewer is about fifteen, storms about eight percent and your streets are about one.
So, I mean, I'm not in favor of this, but from a financial standpoint, we could do all of this, it's half of the core, we could push the core off. I mean, I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but I'm just saying, there, there are different ways to do this.
Yeah.
Then we just need to make that.
Yes. One of the biggest selling points when we started talking about the core is there are three schools that butt up the core. So that's where the sidewalks, that's where all the, that's where it was sort of important. Not that this is so important, but.
And then, uh, she, that kind of breaks down the phases. That's kind of where the phase one design is happening now and then phase one construction and admin will be twenty twenty-one. And then phase two through four are.
That's where we need you guys to fill in those places.
Prioritizing.
Redwood and Sioux pulled it back up.
Yep.
Is this where you're kind of in the off and on thing with the core? Isn't that what I've heard you say before? This, this thing, this, this project, it'd be off and on?
Yep.
But I'm not sure if this is as important. So we have to.
Oh, that's what you were saying?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We want your input is to, you know, if you want to flip flop every year, if you just want to concentrate on the core and, and after we do phase one of Rushmore, how do you want to phase those? How do you want to do them?
Well, how, how much is the sewer going to be messed up if we only do state phase one and Rushmore and wait for the rest of it?
I don't think you'll have as many issues if, if it's designed properly, um, which when they do give us some type of design, Danny and I can look at it, we can get it set up so it will work. It may cost a little bit because you set a manual where you normally wouldn't have just to end it at that margin project. But the biggest part of this is the storms. It has to go somewhere and it can't just keep running down.
It has to change.
It is.
Yep.
It's always big work. We think we could do phase one of Rushmore and then.
I think we just keep going.
And then get the cost.
Kind of like the.
Or is there, is it possible to scale down Rushmore into additional phases after, after phase one?
Yeah.
And do part of that while we're doing construction in the core?
I mean, we don't want to make it too small, but yeah.
So you got to make it significantly enough to get bidders.
Sure.
To get good bidders.
Okay.
Redwood and Sioux.
Blue dab. So this is our truck route. So if you go off of Split Rock, go down Redwood, go west, you're going past like Anytime Fitness and then you go around that weird little curve to the south, thank you. And then it turns into Sioux and then down to Holly. So that stretch of road right there is our only truck route in town and, uh, it's in pretty rough shape. So we did. We did a couple of water looping projects. So we got that done. Yep, storm sewers in there. So all the utilities are done, but now we have a lot of patches in there. And where it's not patched is in pretty bad shape. Um, I think before there's been talk about doing like a mill and overlay over that section. There's a couple of issues with that. We did have Geotech come and do some soil, um, borings. There's really not enough base course there to support a mill and overlay. They definitely didn't recommend that. And, um, when you do a mill and overlay, you are required to bring everything up to ADA standards. And all of those intersections, the intersections along Redwood are not terrible. They're not great, but it doesn't take much to fix those. But the ones along Sioux are really challenging because there is quite a bit of grade change there and so we're going to have to cut back into those intersections quite a bit in order to make those work.
Can you tell that like spats and?
Late.
Rich grass.
Late ends the worst.
And the fire, the fire hall?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Um, one thing we keep in mind with this project is whenever we do it, it probably shouldn't be at the same time as exit four oh six. Just because we're going to have a lot of construction in that area coming off of Split Rock.
Is that going to be?
Yeah, that would mean it would be a challenge.
Is that twenty twenty-three whatever?
Twenty twenty-five?
Oh, construct.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-fives in that.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three is when they want to start construction on exit four oh six and it's a two-year project.
Okay, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Is there any other option besides mill and overlay?
I mean, no, not really.
The, the, the problem with Redwood and we've discussed it, we knew, we know it needs a mill and overlay because it's rutted. Uh, it's getting tracks in it and, and the water's just beating the heck out of it. So we talked, talked about a mill and overlay for a while. Once we did the soil borings, there's not enough base under there. I mean, when you build a truck route, it should be a little heavier than a residential street. In this instance.
Eighty-four inches of gravel or something?
Yeah, there might be some with six.
Yeah, it varied quite a bit.
Should be, you started a foot.
But if it's a truck route, I would say twelve inches to eighteen. That east part of Redwood, right about where the vet clinic and stuff is, I can remember the bay when that was just a dirt road. And when they came in, all they did was push some of the dirt out and throw it around along the bay.
Who did that and why?
Oh, I don't know. That was thirty years ago, ten, twenty-five years ago.
So you, you, you need a, a foot of base minimum depending on the soil conditions. And then instead of a three and a half to four inch asphalt mat, you should have six to eight.
Yeah. If not concrete.
Or concrete.
Has that road been rebuilt and redone since it was built? It's been thirty pieces. That's the problem. They did Perkins Park there, that industrial park, and then they went just a little bit further because they were going to try and get the up to Tammerack and then Lukowski's and then Dave's area over there, Dogg's Village. So it just.
I think it was.
Pieces.
Yeah, with gravel, that's why I kind of drove the car.
Sorry.
I used to look a lot of.
Sorry, ruined it for you.
Well.
For your kid.
Had fun. I got to control it.
You started backing the gravel.
So.
Go ahead.
So, how long would a mill and overlay get us? Five years, ten years, zero years?
The only trucks driving down that, I don't think you can make two years. The cracking in the stream is bad already and you're putting a mill and overlay on it, you're just putting a family with it out of it.
You know, we, we mill, we mill and overlay Sioux five years ago with the thinking that we would get rid of the rutting and the, and the cracking, but the cracks reappeared and it's starting to rut already. Because all we did was a mill and overlay. We didn't do the base. Now adventure to guess, it's the typical Brandon Street of six inches of gravel.
What's a mill and overlay cost?
Many hours a mile or a little bit?
So.
How many miles to say? I don't know where this is, I think it's a little over.
Well.
It is one point four miles.
So the number you have in here is, is, uh, tearing it up and starting over?
Right. And I don't think we can do a mill and overlay without fixing the intersections. I mean, we can, but then we do risk the whole ADA thing.
So do we have to redo Sioux in the next five years too?
Sioux? Well, just this section of it.
No, but we're removing mill and overlay and it's running again already.
Oh.
No.
We didn't put that in here. It's.
I think you'll get more out of it, but it's just got to keep the time that we have to do the maintenance on it. We do know that it's a more major thoroughfare. So if we get the chance, we always try and do the crack city on that south because we want to try and preserve that road. But then it comes back to our slurry seal where we have to try and keep that on that same page. We don't want to fall behind, I guess is what we're saying. We, we already do a little bit more extra maintenance on that south end. You're talking about Sioux from like Holly, Holly South.
Holly to Park.
I think beyond Park it's.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's.
That's where the worst is.
Yep.
We actually have a.
That is.
That in here?
In the budget next year.
Oh, great. Okay.
To do some ma, patching.
Are you suggesting it should be gone before the four oh six or after the four, right after the four oh six?
That's for you guys.
That's for you to prioritize.
So that comes into play with the next project that we'll talk about. So keep that in the back of your mind. We got to talk about the next project and then it'll be easier to decide that. Um, two more things about this stretch of road. There is a culvert that goes underneath of this road that brings the stormwater from the stone ridge area. It goes down underneath the railroad tracks and then it goes underneath Redwood. Um, we really need to keep an eye on that since they are going to develop more of stone ridge. There's been a lot of conversations with that developer because they didn't want to provide any kind of stormwater detention because it's a really big drainage area and they are a very small piece of that drainage area, but I still require them to do a little bit, which did not make them very happy. But the culvert underneath the railroad tracks is not in very good shape and I don't want them to add any more water to that than what we need to. Um, we might have to do some kind of an analysis on that when we go to redo this road just to make sure that it's sized correctly and we might have to work with the railroad a little bit to see what can be done with their pipe. Cause theirs is just a plastic pipe. It's not going to hold much. And I don't want to have water backing up there and then having erosion problems. That's just an FYI. Um, the other thing is that there is a shared use path or a bike path along the one side of Redwood. For the most part, it's in pretty good shape. Um, I did put that in for the TAP grant because the TAP grant that we applied for this year for, um, Redwood and Chestnut, they like to see a big phased project. So I threw that in there in case we redo those intersections, then hopefully the state would, uh, grant us the four hundred thousand dollars, which I think would go a long ways at those intersections. So if you look at that second page, that's kind of the phasing map that we put together. Obviously it's not set in stone, so as we go through these priorities, I can move that around. But I think that TAP funding is really important to keep applying for every year so that we get it once in a while at least.
Cause didn't we have a, a space that wasn't filled in on that?
Yeah, we.
And we filled that.
We filled it in. Kind of around the curve.
Yeah, we did that, right?
Yep.
Actually it was from, uh, what's that first, Redwood Circle?
Yep.
So just past was on the core.
So it was all.
That was all open.
Yep.
We got that done though.
You want to talk about the next Redwood?
Yes. So, um, the oranges, pink dam, that Redwood Boulevard and Chestnut Boulevard? Yes. So that section is township gravel. So the bridge along Redwood is set up for kind of a shared use path on the one side. Um, this is the section that we applied for the TAP funds this year. If we are awarded that, then we have three years to spend that. I don't know that we will get that the first year we apply for it. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we get it, but if we don't, I say we apply for it again next year. Um, kind of the biggest problem with this section is that it's not annexed into city limits. And so in the budget, we put in some money there to do an annexation study with CCOG. That'll help us defend our position on getting those property owners to annex into city limits. I think that's definitely going to be a battle, but there's a lot of residents that use that road already. Um, plus TB and J has that eighty acres. But they have given me a couple of concept plans, but they are not ready to give it to planning and zoning yet, so they haven't officially started that process. I think they're still kind of moving ideas around there. And, you know, hopefully we have a new elementary school on the east side, which.
And Tony's got all that one.
And Tony has two hundred acres out there as well.
We really need to get that developed up for Hannah's.
And all, all this takes into account is to the intersection of Chestnut, Redwood. We don't, this doesn't include going further east. There's thirteen property owners that would be adjacent to the roadway that we're going to be dealing with.
Do we have?
Yeah.
So we're working on, we're going to work on an annexation study next year.
And some preliminary engineering.
Preliminary engineering on that road next year.
If we annex them in, then do we have to offer that water to sewer them?
We already have water main to that intersection. It's looped on Redwood and Chestnut. Sanitary sewer is going to be a little trickier, I think. Um, that'll be part of the annexation study in order to get state approval of annexing territory, especially when it's not a petition. Um, you've got to kind of outline what services you're going to provide and the timeframe to get them there.
Which TB and J will need sewer down that stretch of road to develop part of their parcel.
Is that the local park somewhere?
Apparently.
So let's see if we get.
My opinion on that, that project is, folks, I think that is way more important. My opinion on that, that project is, folks, I think that is way more important than what we give it credit for.
Yeah.
This town does not grow unless we go east. There's, there's just nowhere else to go. When Justin Oakland gets done with his things, and depending on what Mike Coughlin does, that's it, folks. There's nothing left here. And if we start not growing, you're gonna die. And so I, that's why I think that's so important, that the gateway to our success is, is growing to the east there.
Yep, and we, and we would be looking at using special assessments to fund.
On this particular one, I didn't break down the sources of funding, because, um, it's an artillery road. So to estimate how much is gonna be special sense to those property owners, and how much the city's gonna have to pay at this time is, is hard to do. Uh, we are currently working on a special assessment policy to update that and to really define on what we special assess and what we don't. So that'll be coming forward hopefully soon, because we gotta work on that with iron wood, too. But, so I don't have a good gauge on that, but preliminary design, annexation study will help, and the preliminary design will also help on that.
So if we annex the property, we're not just doing one, we're gonna go all the way back?
We should.
Yes.
And take, go back to Tony Bocce's house.
Should.
All the way up.
Yep, that would be the area.
Berkman's and all.
Berkman's and all.
Oh, Berkman's.
Yeah.
Um, so, okay, let's say we, let's be optimistic, and say we get the tap ground. Then we have to have all of this done within.
You have to have the money spent three years. So say we design in three years, we could use those funds for the design. It'd be ideal to use them for the construction, but we could use them for the design.
It's gonna have to be spent on.
It does have to be spent on sidewalks, but when you have survey, you're gonna survey all of it at one time. When you do the design, a lot of that's gonna be the road, too. The environmental portion of it is gonna be the whole section, so there's a lot of overlapping. Um, they're gonna decide in January. And remember, we have Exit 406, twenty twenty-three, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one I thought we could do during.
So just a reminder, I know we talked about it at a budget time, you know, with this annexation of this area in particular, the vast majority of those property owners do not like the city in any way, shape, or form. So it, it, it will be a very contentious process.
Annexation study, yeah.
If we do not annex them, can we go forward building the road, or it's not?
No.
No.
If we have to annex them, we can go forward building the road.
We, we could annex the road.
Yes and no. If you have the funding, yes, because if you don't annex them, the city's picking up the whole entire bill. Which with all of the projects, you're gonna have to prioritize, and that, and that one, if that's on the top of your list, and something's gonna have to fall back.
So they get special assessed, but we cover some.
We cover some.
Because we have other people driving on it.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. These are all the same, it's probably, to try and annex properties on their outskirts. Yeah, but they're all the neighborhood's white.
Yeah, but they don't want the special.
What's a, what's a?
They don't want that, and then they don't want to be in city limits and have to pay city taxes. So it's kind of both.
Both are, what's the, what's the special assess the cost of this situation?
Uh, well.
We, we'd have to figure out a front foot cost. Well, there's a couple of different ways to look at it. You do it on a, a front foot, you could do it on acreage. So, you know, like TB and J owns eighty acres there. If you spread that out over eighty acres, it might be a little bit different. So it'd be tough to, to figure that out right at the moment. That'll be part of the annexation study.
The, the house on the south side, the other corner.
Martha Stewart, or Martha Stewart, Martha Smith, Martha Smith. I bought you too much food network. She, she would, she, she owns that whole corner. She owns three parcels there. A pretty significant, and all of them do. The other problem with the special assessment, they're all big lots. So they're gonna be pretty hefty special assessments.
They're gonna be three minutes. Well, will it start at PNC?
No.
So.
The annexation would, but the special assessments.
They've ran some preliminary numbers on iron wood. And one of the properties is two hundred and fifty front footage, its special assessment is a hundred and twenty thousand.
So the other thing you have to remember, special assessments, we can't assess any more than the actual increase in value. So, yeah, we may be looking at a potential hundred thousand dollar special assessment, but does it increase the, the value of that property by a hundred thousand? So in some of these instances, we may actually go out and do special, uh, assessments or appraisals on the parcels to at least start laying a found, a foundation for the legal challenge that's gonna be coming. Nope, nope.
You know, we just annexed property along that street.
Well, I mean, it is, but there's really no utilities. There's a little bit of sewer, but.
Yeah, this, this one.
And once we get it surveyed, it'll be a lot easier to figure that out.
And acres.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You wanna do the next one, because we're over our hour?
I'm gonna quit.
Okay. If you want to, or if you wanna take them home and, and read the.
No, I didn't.
The information.
But those were the big ones. Maybe.
You just don't wanna read them at home when you're bored. Yeah.
Yes.
I, I took it over to. I took it over to the county planning and zoning commission the other, or planning and zoning office the other day, and the guy was like, I don't even wanna touch it.
Oh, jeez.